Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Village Council's special budget session meeting for today, Wednesday, October 21st, 2020, October 1st, 2025. Judy Colerow?
Yes, Stokes.
I am here.
Devoe Leonard?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Howsh?
Atlee here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Also present, village manager Johnny Burns, assistant village manager Elise Giardulo, and now, Brettle, water and wastewater superintendent, Paige Byrd, chief of police, Ben Sparks, electric and water superintendent, Meg Leatherman, planning and zoning and economic development director, Michelle Robinson, finance director. We have Tiffany Heiser here as our consultant from the Shared Resource Center. Tanner Bussey is here, streets, parks, and sewer foreman, and Samantha Stewart, Parks and Rec supervisor.
Well, thank you all for being here. It's nice to see you all, literally, to be looking at you. So cool. So, following the agenda, we want to begin with a budget overview from Michelle.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
We've got a jam-packed agenda, so I will try to keep it as brief as I can, so we can get on to our other presenters. So, we're first going to go over, the budget cycle has been more refined than in years past. The admin team, with the help of Tiffany, has spent considerable time analyzing trends, current year data, to fine-tune the 2026 budget and beyond. We developed and maintained regularly scheduled finance committee meetings. We've met five times so far. We've covered various topics. Gavin's also going to cover what finance committee overview has been this year. We've examined the enterprise funds. We've included utility rate review and assessment of operational trends versus approved rates. We completed the fiscal year '25 budget overview and mid-year check-in. We performed a line-by-line item review of '25 compared to '26 budget projections for every village fund. We analyzed village investments and discussed the strategies for investing in the interest. We briefly discussed the pro forma for loss in place. We are still reviewing that and getting that all together. We've discussed the capital initiatives for the next three years and how best to plan for financial constraints that we're facing. And then, we outlined this year, the council initiative process and the planning for the '26 budget. So, the main challenge for 2026 budget presents the first significant deficit spend in the last five years. More than half of our major funds, including the general fund, are projected to be at a deficit. We also have the levy renewal on the ballot for November. We're assuming, in the budget, the passage of it. And overall, it's a status quo budget. We're not including any more staffing. We're only going to fill the staffing as needed. Capital initiatives have been limited to high priority needs and very little new spending. So, what I have up first is, we'll go over the general fund. As I said, it's projected a deficit of nearly $820,000 for 2026. It's, like I said, the first unbalanced budget in over five years. The deficits are projected to grow as the years go. It's projected to grow to $1 million in '27. Balancing the budget for 2028 is a main priority for finance committee and staff. Staffing levels are maintained, as I said, but we are considering a 3% cost of living adjustment just to stay consistent with other entities. It could change, but that's what we're projecting. The general fund remains a primary funding source by way of transfers for parks and streets, which lack dedicated revenues. The revenue is projected to drop due to the one-time 2025 grant fund rolling off. It was a $545,000 advance we did. And we're taking into consideration decreased interest earnings from our investments. Capital initiatives have been scaled back to have-to and need-to priorities with little room for optional upgrades. The budget continues subsidized support for village facilities and events. This includes the pool, Bryant Youth Center, train station, pottery center, sports field, and community events, such as Pride, MLK Day, Street Bear, et cetera. The council initiatives have not yet been included and will be added to the general fund budget once they're finalized. As you can see in this slide, this is the general fund. As I stated, at the bottom, you can see where we're at, the deficit spend. So, our next one, our next fund we'll talk about is parks. There's no dedicated revenue source, as I mentioned earlier. It relies this year on a $700,000 transfer from the general fund. The revenues are projected pretty much, what little revenues we have, to stay the same as '25, aside from any future council initiative transfers. The overall budget is down 11% due to a $100,000 reduction in transfer that we did in '25. And the parks fund is projected to nearly break even in 2026. Moving on to the streets fund, as I said earlier, that one's also, there's not a major dedicated revenue source, so the general fund supplements that in transfers. The transfer for 2026 is going to be $635,000. It's over a $400,000 increase from last year. The overall budget is up 39%, driven by a $429,000 capital budget request for paving, sidewalks, curbs, cracked ceiling repair, and striping. The street fund is projected to deficit spend by just over $180,000. The next one is our water fund. Revenues in the water fund are projected to drop 7% due to a $100,000 decline in the tap fees. This is from the reduced new construction in the village. The expenses are up 3%, and that's just inflationary cost. Otherwise, it's a status quo. The water fund is projected to deficit spend about $216,000, with deficits growing in Our next one is the electric fund. The revenues are projected to increase 16%, mainly $270,000 for a 5% consumer rate increase for '26, and the $500,000 in rec sales for next year. The expenses are also up 16%, driven by higher power costs, and then the $500,000 transfer to the electric capital fund from those rec sales. The electric fund is projected to deficit spend just over $500,000, with deficits expected to grow unless we address them, which is what we've been working on in finance committee and with Tiffany. Our next one is the storm water, or storm fund. Revenues are projected to rise modestly, with expenses held in check. The fund remains balanced and is building reserves for any upcoming projects. The next is solid waste fund. Revenues are up 8%, about $40,000 for consumer rate increase. Expenses are planned to mirror 2025 with no real increase. Solid waste fund is balanced for 2026. Onto the sewer fund. Revenues are projected to pretty much stay the same as 2025. Budget is down 16%, largely due to a $350,000 reduction in the transfer to the sewer capital fund. The fund is projected to deficit spend nearly $150,000, but this is consistent with historical cycles. As I scroll down here and show you, as you can see, we've had deficit one year, we'll find the next deficit, and back in 2027, we'll go back to a positive. We won't be in deficit spend. And it just alternates depending on the capital needs for that year as well. And then, the last one I'm going to cover is the affordable housing. We did an accounting shift this year. It consolidated all the revenues and expenses into Fund 2024, so that explains any increase in activity. We've moved it from the general fund to specifically put it towards the Affordable Housing Fund, so that it's locked there. And then, council initiatives have not been included yet. They will be added once they're approved or determined by council. So, I'm not trying to be bleak, or I'm just, Tiffany and I have been working on this, and like I said, with the help of finance committee, we're just trying to sharpen pencils and dig in the best we can.
So, Michelle, back to water. With the fact that we've got more users, what do you think is the drag on that one?
So, generally, for all of our enterprise funds, the biggest drag is going to be your capital expenses with the rates that we've established.
Okay.
And so, we could pull up, and that's one of the things we ask staff to do, is to sharpen pencils and to really do a deep dig in what we need to do. And there's a difference in being proactive versus reactive, and so there's a sharp, there's a balance there to what we've asked them to do. We're mindful of that. But when we look at, generally speaking, all of our enterprise funds, that's where we find ourselves, that the rates that have been established and the capital needs that we have to maintain and be proactive, they're not working congruently, and so we have deficit spends. And so, that's what we have to overcome.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a follow-up on that question, and thank you both for your comments, and Michelle in particular, about whether you've taken into account things like the rec sales for electric fund, and how planned tap fees are impacting the water enterprise. So, with respect to planned new housing, new customers, has that been taken into account already, or is it too soon?
Too soon. Too soon. Okay.
The other thing I'll say on your question, Brian, is as our costs have went up, so has what we buy, chemicals, supplies, and that is not figured into everything, so that's the reason why.
Yeah. So, there might be a buffer with respect to new customers?
Yeah, and I will tell you, and I don't mean to speak for Johnny or for Michelle, but, you know, we did see a little bit of a growth in the year. We still see or are projecting some growth for next year. It's just definitely the back end of that growth, and so it's not the peak of it. And so, that's why some of our revenues are going to decrease, and you'll see that in what we're projecting.
Any other questions?
So, from when we last met at finance committee and went through the capital, is like everything that was in the capital in here, or did things get trimmed from the capital version we were looking at? Does that, follow me?
Yes, so, is it, when you asked that question, I'm going to clarify. We were, we had started the year '26 budget looking at a much more robust capital initiative.
Right.
We then asked staff to go back and refine those requests.
Yeah.
Fine-tune it for three years.
Yeah.
We met with finance committee. Gavin, you were obviously part of that, and I think the question is, did we then reduce any of those capital initiatives? We did not reduce any of those capital initiatives.
Okay.
Hadn't had time to go back and vet all of those conversations with staff. So, what you have in front of you are the capital initiatives that we put in front of finance committee.
Okay. Cool.
Tiff, I have a question. What is our risk with having this type of a budget? Like, if we are deficit spending, I mean, how likely is it that we'd be placed on a watch list, or even under like a fiscal warning, so that we end up having the state come in and start managing the finances?
So, generally, we're going to look at our cash reserves and how many years our cash is viable or keeps us afloat. And so, they'll look at that in addition to any plans that we may have to mitigate those deficits. And so, one of the things we talked about towards the tail end of our most recent finance committees is just that. We have to do, we have to really look at our finances and assess the deficit spend for what it is, and we have to build ourselves by '28. By the end of '27 into '28, we need to be balanced. That can be a couple different things. From a government entity perspective, you raise more money, or you cut, or you do a balance of the two, and that's probably where we'll be. But we have rates that have been established for us for the next couple of years, and so we'll be looking at those. I don't want to be too presumptuous, but we will be, we'll have to look at rates for the years beyond what's already been council-approved. And then, we'll be looking at staff, and we'll be looking at operational needs to balance out that budget. So, it's not a definite answer, Trish. I'm not trying to evade it. I'm just, it's kind of a massage that happens, and so we're actively engaged in looking at that.
Go ahead, Gavin.
Well, I'll go over, you know, the basics of the memo, you know, sharing a little more we had in finance committee, but I think my general sense is that, so we're going to have, we're going to have to make some changes over the next few years, basically. And if we don't, if we didn't make any changes to the capital from when we last met to this version, I think we're, like, I would probably advocate for seeing some more movement in this direction, just because it's a, it's kind of like one of these things where it's not that big of a problem right now, but if we don't start dealing with it now, it's going to become much more challenging. So, I think just kind of getting a little more in line with what is a need, and how far does that go, that's kind of my sense, is that we just, we don't want to, we don't want to let it get too far. I think, because we did have a, we did pass a deficit budget two years ago, right? We passed it, and so, you know, we've had deficits, we had, that was the only deficit in the budgets I've done, but we had a deficit, but then we've typically had notable overages on revenue and then notable underspend on the expense side. I think folks should have a sense that this time, we feel like we've been more conservative on, less conservative on revenue and more conservative on, or, well, less conservative on both, I guess. We are now, we think, more in line with reality, so that last year, you might remember, I think it was about a $5 million difference from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, because of revenue being millions of dollars more and spending being millions of dollars less. So, if you're looking at this and thinking, but, yeah, we passed the deficit budget before, and it was okay, I think it still might be okay, but it's, we're feeling like now we're more in the like, this is getting real. You know, we got to be a little more cognizant of those numbers. If any, obviously speak up if that doesn't feel like a fair analysis.
Well, I was going to say, Gavin, that you, you may have answered the question I was struggling to ask, which was, you know, back of the envelope, you know, how much wiggle room do we anticipate exists there in pulling back on anything? I will submit that I will speak for myself. I'm willing to be flexible with my requests. And so, the question would have been, what do we feel like is there in terms of wiggle room? Of course, Gavin, your comments, if we are closer to reality, then there's not a lot of wiggle room, but someone confirm, deny, whether they feel like it might be typical years in terms of where we've been, you know, one side or another of conservative and ending up where we'll end up being, you know, on the low side of our expenses, as we have typically been, which is a result of all the good management that happens throughout the year. So, kudos to you all for doing that. So, do we feel like there is room, or do we feel like we are closer to reality, and then this is probably, we got to cut wherever we think we can?
So, I think the best statement was what Tiffany made, which is, in the next three years, we need to figure out how to either increase revenues or decrease expenses, or both, but we're still in healthy shape this year. And if the operating levy doesn't pass, then we're going to be in crisis mode, but anyway, you know, so, but right now, I think it's, we've got to, we've got to address it soon, so.
So, I'm going to take a stab, Kevin, in addressing your question. I think one of the things that Michelle and Johnny have worked really hard at doing is creating finances that are more in line with what we expect. If, if, if we've done our job well, notwithstanding some large, big projects that we didn't anticipate having to do, we should end under budget by a percent or two, or three, right? Not 10, not 15, not 20%, which has been kind of the village's past. And same with revenue. We should come in a percent two or three from what we've, what we've projected here, not 10, 15, and 20% variances. The biggest piece for our expense side isn't going to be in our personnel. We know what that is, like I said, notwithstanding any big shifts that we didn't anticipate. It's whether or not we get the capital projects done, or whether or not any more capital projects land at our plate that we have to address. And so, those are the types of things that could ebb and flow and send us over or significantly under budget. If we do a retro look at last year's budget, we had slated a lot more capital projects than what we actually did. Why? Because we knew we needed to do them, but it wasn't the time to do them, because we had other things going on. So, we had to massage that budget, pull them out. Some of them are going to be landing on our lap for '26, and some of them are going to be in subsequent years, and some of them, in truth be told, are off the docket altogether. And so, we're trying to do what we can to mitigate these deficits. We're trying to do what we can to draw in how we budgeted and how we think we're going to end, to be more shored up and in line, so that you all have a better, a better gauge of where the village's finances really are going. And so, that's what we've spent a lot of time trying to, trying to fine-tune.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. All righty. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Tiff. So, with the other groups you work with, are you seeing a more of a reaction to the state of affairs in the world? You know, because I'm telling you, I have friends that work in other local governments, and they're, they're taking a hard line on their budgets because of the unknown. We don't know, you know, I work for a Department of Defense firm, so I could lose my job. I know there's others in the community. That's all going to impact the numbers that we receive. And so, you know, I see this, I don't, I don't necessarily see as, as conservative of approach as I'm seeing, as I'm hearing about from other municipalities that are nearby.
Yeah, I think there's just a real sense of dread from a public finance perspective, and I think you all are aware that there is property tax reform. Not only did the governor create a committee that just actually closed up their recommendations yesterday, but we're facing a November 26 vote that will, that would be a vote to get rid of property taxes altogether, right? I think there are, there are those of us who work in public finance and are the recipients of property taxes, and we're sitting there saying, there's a real panic button that everybody thinks is a doomsday panic button, and there are those of us who are thinking, we're a lot closer to that button than we are not. And so, for us, just in the general fund, that's $1.3 million that's gone if that vote happens. And so, to your point, there are a lot of entities who are taking a very hard line at budgeting and are forcing balanced budgets, because they're saving their cash for time. Cash to us, in all government entities, gives us time to adjust for those catastrophic shifts, right? A vote for no property taxes statewide. If you have cash, you have time to adjust, so cash equals time. So, if you start drawing down your cash, you're drawing down your ability to react, right? And then, things happen overnight. We have to shut the doors overnight on these things. And so, as a, as a way to mitigate that, people are becoming more balanced or have a lens to be balanced, at least in their, the subsequent budget or two. And so, that's what we, I mean, that's the crux of where we are right now, is trying to figure out, what do we do? And I think, I can speak, this is Tiffany Heiser, right? Not at Shared Resource Center, this is a Tiffany thing, but if we see property taxes eliminated, it's catastrophic for the state of Ohio. I'm not sure that we should be planning catastrophically, right? Because there are things that we still need to operate, but then, at some point, we should have those conversations about what would it look like if, and be prepared. That was not a lot of sunshine.
It's the reality, and I mean, and they're freezing raises. They're telling their departments to, you know, cut, cut by a certain percentage across the board. It's, because it's unknown, and, you know, these tariffs are just going to increase, like, all the building supplies, everything, and you don't know what that number's going to be.
Correct.
Anything else on the budget overview before we move on to the finance committee overview? All right. No movement. I'm going to hand the floor to Brian and Gavin for the finance committee overview.
Okay, I think I'm going to go ahead. So, hopefully, you've all seen the memo that was in the packet, so I'm just going to try to kind of hit the high notes for people who didn't see it, and then just, you know, open up any questions. You've kind of got a sense that the finance committee, you might remember in the budget last year, we were sort of said, hey, can you do the line-by-line review? So, this is like the overview, because it feels like it wasn't necessary to do line-by-line, and we've been doing that in the finance committee, and then also starting to look at capital expenses. And then also starting to look at capital expenses. We still have a ways to go. Like we sort of started this summer and I think you, it's a big project. And so we still have a ways to go to look at, to look at things fully, but just to kind of give you a sense that that's what we've been doing. And Michelle kind of already went over the, you know, the pieces we've been doing throughout the year, reviewing financials, discussing investment strategies, et cetera. I think the, I would echo, I think it's important for people to know that this is, in terms of what I would consider to be our operational expenses, a status quo budget. There's just not, if you go through, there are just not that many lines where there's a, you know, there's an increase or a notable increase. It's mostly, this is what we've had. So in general, I want to say last year, we had one staff person, there were a couple other new expenses. This one feels like it's just do what we've been doing. So that's the, you know, if I had to say a big takeaway, that's don't expect much new. I also think don't expect much less. And then this gets into that question of like, how do we manage our expectations around, around what we're going to have happen longer term? We have been assuming that the renewal levy passes and, you know, Brian mentioned this, but it's worth noting that if it doesn't, it's a, it's a notable source of revenue that we'll have to make some really hard decisions around. The other piece on the, the property tax collections, I'll just go like one step more sunny than Tiffany. Just, just in that, you know, if you haven't followed it, there's a group that has talked about doing a full property tax repeal. They would have to gather enough signatures for a statewide initiative and then get that campaign passed at the state level. And that's, it's just, it's a big thing to do and there's not really an indication currently that they're making significant progress. To my knowledge, I haven't seen any indication that that's the case. What will almost certainly happen, based on the conversations that are really widely public in every newspaper and consistently happening, is that there's probably going to be some changes to property tax that will impact. So I think there is sort of the catastrophic that I would consider to be less likely and the things are directly impacted, directly interrelated. If we don't see some of the property tax recommendations passed through the legislature and therefore some of our revenue taken away, then the likelihood of that statewide initiative goes up. Because that's basically some people that are saying, well, if you're not going to do anything, then we're just going to take the whole thing away. And I think there's a pretty large number of people on both sides of the aisle that would say, that's too much. Think about it, for us, it's 1.3 million. Imagine for the schools, right? It's like, we're talking, this is whatever catastrophe is, times six. Anyway, so just to say, a little bit rosier, you know, I think is reasonable. I think the, you can kind of get a sense, I won't spend too much time on it, but I think the big question that we're grappling with is, how should we manage capital spending in the years to come? As Michelle and Tiffany mentioned, the biggest numbers that make the parentheses come to go in the negatives are the large capital expenses. It doesn't mean that every dollar we spend doesn't add up, but those are the big numbers that pretty quickly can make, you know, our numbers look negative. So that's, you know, everything matters, but that's why you end up looking at those bigger pieces. And I think it's already been said that we've been looking at these three-year, you know, expenses. I want to, I think it's also worth noting that we have come a long way in projecting out. So thank you to all the staff. We have got, we have gone in the right direction at looking in the future. And I think Johnny's been really clear that he wants to go further in the future of having good 10-year plans. We're not there yet. And I think even the three-year plans still have some work to do, but it's, from everything I can tell, we're in a much better position. And this is so that if you get in that better position, you're less likely to be in the position we're in right now, right? Do more of that future planning, you have less of these kinds of, you know, conversations. I think the next piece was just talking about, you know, I think the, the other big question in addition to managing capital spending is, how do we find balance in spending to match our priorities? So you can kind of get a sense of it, there, there's capital projects, I mean, there's a lot of things we could do. You know, we could do a lot of projects and we could spend, you know, a good chunk of our dollars on capital projects. If we do that, then at some point, we don't have money for some of the quality of life things, some of the arts, culture, events kinds of things. If you do too many arts, culture, events kinds of things, then you don't have enough money for the capital expenses, for any of the utilities or any of our infrastructure. So obviously there's a balance with these things. And I think that becomes sort of the core question is, how do you balance? We all want, you know, every street to have no potholes, every electrical outage to be cleared up immediately, every single, you know, you know, piece of infrastructure we have to be working really well. We all want to have all the events and all of the things. And then it's just trying to figure out, how do you find a balance of, you know, which things you prioritize? I think, you know, ultimately, and I'm sort of skipping to the end here, we, we do a lot of things. And I think that was the big takeaway, when you go line by line and you look at every single thing you're spending on, you take away and you say, man, we support a ton of different things across the community. And it's like, uh, maybe we can't do quite every one of them and we've got to figure out, you know, the line. And so I think you could kind of get a sense of like, we spent some time in the Finance Committee in that like tension place, you know, especially over these past couple months as the, as the number became more. So I think that's a decent summary we did, but obviously, we talked about this, all the Finance Committee members, so if I miss anything or anything that y'all want to highlight, please jump in and I'm happy to, I'm sure we can all answer any questions people have.
Finance Committee?
I mean, maybe I'll just quickly underscore, it's going to come down to capital and decisions around that and creativity around revenue sources. I do want to highlight, we did a look at our legal expenses and they actually, I'm pretty impressed, they only increased a little bit with the change. So I just want counsel to know like that, that's not, that's not an issue in this budget. So, yeah, I guess, I think what Gavin like summarized is really where it's at, but yeah, it's going to come down to capital, so, yeah. And Carmen, it sounded like you had something you wanted to say.
I do not.
Okay.
I do not either. Okay. Anything else on the Finance Committee overview? Any member of the Finance Committee? All righty. So now we're going to move on to capital initiatives and presentations by department. I am not, I'm not asking anybody to change anything that they were prepared to say, but, but I'm going to ask a question and I want each of you to be thinking about it. I mean, you know, like now or later, you know, if, if the items that you're going to discuss are meant for, you know, start to completion in the next fiscal year, and I do know part of why we didn't, I presume, for the most part, part of why we didn't get some projects, capital or otherwise, done is circumstances, time, I mean, lots, like Gavin said, we do a lot, you know, but can we do it all? Is it, is it physically possible to do it all? And so I would like for you to, to optionally, you know, speak to, well, yeah, you know, this was meant to be, start on January, end on December, all done, you know, but we could shift some of it over to another year or, and I'm really not asking you all to do that on the fly, but think about it. Because again, use your, use your experience. You know, there was that project you had this year that you thought you would get done and, you know, something happened, blah, 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 and we only spent half the money and maybe we spent the other half on something else, you know, but there are things I think that tend, some projects that would tend to avail themselves more of stretching out over time and others not. You know, once you dig the hole, you got to fill it, you know, but there's some things, well, why don't we just delay digging the hole for a little bit? So again, not asking you to change your presentation, just think about that or feel free to make, maybe make a comment in that regard because what we've heard already is that what we're seeing is capital proposals at a point in time without doing the fine tuning that we're all going to, going to be asked to do. So in shorter, fewer words, feel free to comment on the fine tuning that you expect to be able to do that might be possible, if, if at all. Okay? All right. That being the case, we're going to go ahead and hand it over to Samantha Stewart. No pressure.
No pressure. I don't know if that's even on. Okay, so the big projects this year that I'd like to see happen for pool will be, it needs to be painted. And it has to be painted for safety reasons and just to be compliant with the standards. So that is a pretty expensive four-stage cleaning process. The painting, the paint itself is so expensive. So that is something that has to happen next year. And I don't see where we can slide on that at all. We have to open the pool, it has to be painted. And along with that painting, our gutters and Tanner, he's attached them so many times, they need to be replugged on, they need to be attached correctly. They fall off mid-season, it's kind of dangerous. We, he can't reattach them because if we drain the pool enough for him to reattach them, we're just flushing money, literally. So those should be priorities. And the two kind of have to work together with that. So if we paint it, we need to get those gutters fixed. Then, so the men's restroom changing area at the pool, I have not seen have any significant upgrades except for maybe new showerheads and curtains. There's severe drainage issues in there where the water just traps and we'll move it, but you've got people coming in all day soaked and wet using the sinks. The water just pools, it becomes infested with mosquitoes. So I'd like to see, the lighting's terrible, the flooring's bad. It's probably been like that for 30, 40 years. So I'd like to see some changes there. They both need to be done, but the men's 100% should take priority over the ladies' changing area. So in the youth center, we started a remodel of our office almost two years ago. We'd like to see it finished since we have, one side is blue, one side is yellow, all new stuff, and then the other side's just the old office stuff. It's not really workable for being with the kids and then trying to do things with renters or the adults that come in to use the center and need to talk to us about stuff, they get bumped by the kids. So I'd like to see that, the remodel complete and finished of that. And then we've got the stands in the gym. They could use some recarpeting, reflooring, something. They're unraveling, they're stained, they're not the best smelling. So those are my big projects.
Well, both of you, Jessica Smith and Johnny, though, we, we can ask questions as needed, but just to sort of, the drain thing, like the men's restroom, you feel that's a drain cleanout or are we talking about busting up concrete to get?
Total overhaul.
You clearly haven't been to the pool. I hold my water.
Yeah, Gavin made some comments about that as well, so.
I cannot say that I personally used the locker room, but I have been in it. I fully support Samantha. Gavin has firsthand knowledge of it. So I don't like Gavin, hardly for Gavin on the locker room.
That's enough. Sam, Neil. All right. Well, yeah, I just, just trying to make the numbers make sense in my head. The question's answered. It's a heavy lift and not just a drain.
We've tried that.
So Sam, and just quickly clarify for me, like what needs to happen at the youth center that you're talking about?
Okay, so you know how we got that really nice new little kitchenette area made? Okay, so that part is beautiful, functioning nice, everything. So the other half of my office, it's chaos. We don't have proper storage, enough storage there for what we do administrative wise and with the kids. So it'd be nice to, and Johnny and I have talked about it, like small designs in our heads, what we think it should look like, a nice designated area for renters and the adults to come in because we do a lot of, you know, we do building rentals, we do special events, someplace for you not to get bumped by a kid running to get a basketball. Yeah.
Cool.
And storage, 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 storage. We have a lot of stuff.
All right. I think it looks like Tanner's queued up unless it, are we, for now? Okay, on to Tanner.
Okay. Well, let's, I'd like to start with sidewalks. We started in 18, I forget what year we, we took sidewalks from the Villagers, was it 2012 or 13? In 18, we began a comprehensive study to look at all the sidewalks, the issues that were going on with it. We looked at 740 spots that were ground, ground down. We replaced 20, 21 sections. Then we looked at it again in '24 and there was another 840 spots checked and there's six locations, large portions of sidewalk that need to be replaced. Right now, we're about halfway through, we're inside the red zone. We're getting ready to have our sidewalks better than they've been maybe ever. You know, we have $50,000 a year for the next three years allocated to replace as needed. I think we've, we have a good product. I would like for us to give them back to the homeowners. We can re-allocate the funds, use it for other things, other capital projects, and they're giving back much better product than they gave us. Moving on from there, we have curb replacement as part of it. We have crumbling curb, curb and gutter. Water's pooling, things are growing up in it. We're doing everything we can to, to keep it together. We did crack ceiling on all locations just to buy more time. But we have $40,000 a year, so we're going to systematically work our way from higher priority zones to less priority zones. And it's probably going to be close to catch basins, low line areas, so we can facilitate the movement of water away from low line areas, so we don't have freezing and thawing and breaking down our roads further. You know, that's caused another issue with our roads, is that the amount of water that's setting on our roads. And with the price of asphalt just going sky high and the lack of money to make it available, what we've done is we've chosen to replace sections that are bad sections. And that's one thing I get commonly, people asking, why isn't my, hasn't my road been repaved? And we have not repaved an entire road in many years. We do sections, we do intersections, we do, right out here on Dayton Street, we did the bend, that was horrible. But this is what we're going to kind of have to continue to do to save money. I've gotten some quotes for doing like Dayton Street, 7,000 feet, you're talking $250,000 out of the general fund. So we're, we're finding new ways to save money and get the services that people need for safety. And then finally, the drinking fountains each year. This has been a common issue where we found new ways to find, well, we winterize them every fall, turn them off so that they don't break down over the winter, turn it back on in the spring, we paint them, we clean them, but they're starting to rust and decay in this climate because it's so caustic that it just, so we replaced one and gone because we just couldn't even turn it back on this year without replacing it. And we're staring at the same thing in front of, at Hiller Run. And so next year, we'll replace that one, hopefully Alice holds together for another year. And, you know, we found some cost-cutting measures to find a better, find as quality of a product for less money and have good service. Because that's always a problem that with our vendors is, is that if you don't have a vetted vendor, you don't know what kind of support you're going to get if things start to break down. So now we've established that and I think we're in a good place there, but it's, it's going to cost a little bit. And that's about it for streets.
Let me, let me back up first. When he says they're outdated, the last one that you fixed was at what location?
The last one we replaced was at Gawn.
What's the last one that you fixed? Was it at Ellis?
Yeah.
That's the one you had to go to the automotive store and buy a car part to fix the drinking fountain because they don't make them parts anymore?
Well, we actually had to get galvanized pipe to go to a car part. They don't make the size anymore.
Does the water come out faster now?
It comes out where it's supposed to as opposed to where it was coming out before.
There we go, that's a way.
So you can go, sir. Well, so in 2019, we began the CIPP project, Cure and Place Piping. We abandoned it, well, in 2025, we didn't do it this year. We abandoned it, well, in twenty twenty-five, we didn't do it this year. We had emergency money to do it in twenty-four. Our system's not getting any newer, it's not getting any better shape, we're doing what we can. We root control to make sure that roots don't infiltrate our VCP, vitriolic clay pipe. But, we're in kind of a strange area geologically. Our bedrock is so shallow here, that in a lot of places, they've either channeled out the bedrock to lay the pipe, and some places where they lay the sanitary next to the water distribution lines. But, when you do that, the pipes aren't vetted correctly, and then you have the hydraulic pressure vehicles, different things going over the road that are pressing this clay pipe that has a service life of fifty years at best. And fifty years of this pipe has come and gone in the nineteen eighties in some places. So, we're trying to do what we can to figure out new ways to salvage what we have and make it new again, without digging it up and putting people through the burden of a construction zone for months and months. So, in lieu of doing the piping, we continue to do the video recording. The village grows by not very much. We will be under different EPA standards. There'll be expectations, and it's a little bit like your taxes. They're gonna ask questions about seven years ago. So, we're trying to stay current with what our expectations are gonna be, and that may or may not happen. But, we're bound to make sure that, you know, when the questions are asked, we have the answers. So, we root control five thousand feet, it's a revolving setup, different parts of town, to make sure that our system stays as well in good shape as it possibly can. We had been rehabbing manholes, chimney seals, and flashing around the pipes itself. But, we had abandoned that as well. That's where a large amount of I N I comes in, infiltration and inflow, which Brad directly receives if we get large rain events. We sat down with Amy Wilcox from the EPA, and our numbers are much better, but they're far from perfect. And, as Michelle had said, and Tiffany had both said it, one catastrophic incident, and all the money we saved could be out the door. And I think that we need to take a real hard look about continuing the process that we've been doing with the slip lining. Because one catastrophic incident, if we're not staying up with what needs to be done, that will happen. It's imminent.
All right. Can I just ask, why did water fountains raise to, like, the top three for you?
Well, I mean, for a multitude of reasons, it had been on the back burner for many years. So, we were talking about doing new signs, and we've just been continuing to chip away at my list, at the list that we've had to continue to make the parks a nice place to be. And access to water is a very important thing. And I think COVID kinda changed some things for us with the bottle fillers and different things from that aspect. And it kinda changed our focus. So, there is an importance on it. And we're finally at a good place in the parks that we can focus on some things. You know, you would think a drinking fountain would be fifteen hundred bucks, and it's not. They're kind of expensive.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
Any other questions for Tanner? Anything else, Tanner? Okay, all right, Brad, you're up.
I will start with water. So, the most important thing is that we maintain the wells. Videoing and cleaning the wells. It's recommended to do a well every three to five years. The way we're doing it now, we'd be doing one every four years. And essentially, that's just, that's gonna maintain them, keep them running good, because if the wells go down, the water would stop. So, it's important to keep doing that. We also have on there drilling for new wells. And if we maintain cleaning and videoing, we can kinda push those back, that we can see the well and know on a regular basis, and know it's doing good. Might not need to replace it this next year, whatever, we can push it back longer.
Real quick, question, with regard to the number of wells you have and the capacity you have, what dictates drilling another well? Is it a factor of one?
Well, a couple of years ago, we were videoing and cleaning the wells, and you find holes in the pipe, it just rusted away. And we had to insert a liner into them. So, that's only gonna Band-Aid it for a few years. There's gonna come a time where we can't clean that well anymore, and we'll have to re-drill a well. So, basically, videoing that and maintaining, cleaning it as long as we can will help kinda push that expense of drilling a new well further back. The other thing in water is our vehicle. The two thousand and ten vehicle we have now, it seems to run good, but the body is falling apart. The doors won't shut all the way. The latch on one of the doors has completely rusted off and fell through. So, when you're driving, the door's rattling, it says "Door ajar" on the thing. So, that truck mainly stays in town, just because of the safety aspects of that truck.
Good idea, you're talking about a banger.
Yeah. What my theory on it is, is the wastewater fumes, rust. It's pretty wild how, if it's parked where the fumes are, the one side is rustier than the other side. That's the two big things for water. Now wastewater, the biggest thing is our blowers, which I believe I've talked to you guys about them before. So, currently, we have two blowers that treat the actual wastewater. And then we had one blower that treats the sludge. That blower went down in two thousand and three. Well, let me step back, these blowers were put in in eighty-eight. And they've had nothing, and they've run good since eighty-eight. The one blower went down, and it could not be repaired, it's obsolete. So, we're able to, luckily, that was the sludge, and we're able to use the other blowers periodically to just mix. This year, the blowers for treatment are extremely loud, and making noises I've never heard. So, they, I don't know how much longer they will run. So, the capital for this, now, it seems extremely high to replace one blower, but this is not to replace one blower. This would actually kind of, it would more efficiently run the plant, it would move, we would actually purchase six blowers. They're smaller in size. And what we would do is, instead of putting all the blowers in one room and running air pipe to where it goes, you would put the blowers outside by the tanks. And then, like, we have four tanks. One blower would run two tanks, the other blower would run the other two, then you'd have a spare if one broke down. So, you're moving it outside, so the noise in the building would go away. They would run more efficiently. You could slow them down, so use less energy, and it would just, it's how they're doing things now. And to your point, Kevin, there is some, I think, some wiggle room here to where maybe we don't do all six in one year. We may be able to use the two old blowers we have now for the digesters, and then the treatment blowers new, that way, because if we lose treatment, if we lose blowers for the treatment, we're in some trouble.
Deep, deep.
Yeah. So, that's the biggest thing. The other thing is the lift station sixty-eight here. So, we've done well at replacing, there's three pumps. One pump is newer, and we replaced it a few years ago, it runs twenty-four seven. The two larger pumps, we replaced one in twenty twenty, and it'll run mainly during high flow. The third pump, we haven't replaced it yet. It was running good, and it didn't really need it, we've kind of, we kept pushing it back, pushing it back. Well, this year, it sprung a leak in the seal. You essentially can't replace the seal. So, it will run if we need it to. The problem is it throws sewage all over the building. So, if it's coming on, you're down in there, you wanna get out.
We all reacted to pages.
It's a mess, it's cleanup. So, we essentially have it off, and if we see high rains coming, we will put it in, we'll open the valves, put it on, it'll leak, and then we'll just clean it up. But, it is something that, once we replace it, that lift stations went through a lot of upgrades throughout the years, and it's pretty up to date.
Right, that is the reason why we replaced the one in twenty twenty.
The one in twenty twenty.
Because of the seep.
Yep, it had been that way, and we kinda didn't run it unless it was, it actually wasn't as bad, it would not leak just with it off. This one is just dripping with it off. Then, when it comes on, it's throwing it.
So, I'm sorry. Throwing it inside the building?
Well, when the pump spins, the water is sitting in there, yes, it's splashing it around.
Oh, no.
And you're also talking about your electric gear is five feet away from it. The other question I have for you is on the pumps, or follow-up. We have also consulted with the sewer contractor we have for the wastewater, to make sure that this new process for the lower motors would align with what they're talking about in the future, so we're not redoing something four years, five years down the road, and they're like, "Oh, you shouldn't have done that." So, Brad's been in conversation with them.
And it should, it should add on easy, if you added tanks, you would just have to add more blowers.
So, just making sure, on the packet part that we got for each of the requests, what's in the budget is what's in the twenty twenty-six column?
Yes.
Okay, cool, just making sure, thank you.
So, on Brad's, Brad's is the one seventy-five, the seventy, and then you had another one in there that is?
There was, the replace the phosphorus pumps. I think, I'm hoping I can get that repaired without replacement. So, I, yeah.
And then the other two for video and root is tanks. And if you see the side note is, is the slip lining that is what we're saying we need to find.
Right, there was a question I had. I know we can't bank on, unintended, bank on grants. But, is there something in the pipeline that we?
We are working every day trying to find grants for everyone sitting down there. Grants are slowing up and drying up for infrastructure and things like this.
It's fair to say, right, we had a generational massive influx of money that came, and now we have a different administration, a different perspective. And even with the same administration, the likelihood of repeating of that same size would be highly unlikely.
So, I would just like to make sure we have clarity on, because I know we've been on the edge with sewer in the past, that whatever we're doing, you know, make sure we don't get back into that. So, it sounds like that's what you're thinking about, but, yeah, this does not seem to be an area to scrimp. So.
Yeah, I like the idea of blowers, you know, a set of smaller blowers, instead of a couple of big hunking ones, and, yeah, and it just sort of lends itself more to, you know, being more flexible with how you present, I think, the plan upfront. Go with multiple smaller versus a couple of big.
Yeah.
Good approach. Kudos. Brad, you have anything else, and does anyone have anything for Brad?
I think I'm done.
All right. Ben?
All right, I'll start with water, distribution capital plan. Which that doesn't coincide with exactly. It's got a lot of what Brad has on. So, what I have is valve maintenance. So, in two thousand and twenty-two, we created a valve maintenance program. We broke the town up in five different sections. Based on my research, we've never turned a valve, ever, in this town since when they get installed. They should be maintained once every five years. So, we broke the town up in five sections, so it could be a continuous cycle that we're exercising the valves. The reason for that is for water main breaks. And if you just need to isolate an area, you have that option. But, we found out very quickly in the south side of town that since they hadn't been turned in so long that they was breaking. So, that was the newer side that we started with, and we broke two or three valves that year. And basically, whatever size valve, it's basically, you just add a thousand dollars to that, and that's what it's gonna cost to get that valve fixed.
Material.
Yeah, material, material-wise. So, we stopped that, because as we moved into the center of town, we got into older valves. And the problem is, if this valve breaks, to get that valve fixed, the option is to go down to this valve and this valve to shut it off, to isolate that one. Then you go down to that one, and if that one breaks, you can get into an absolute mess. So, you have to be prepared when you start doing valve maintenance. And you gotta have the funds that's available to whatever it takes to get them back on. So, we halted that, but it still needs to be a priority. And it's, I guess, the second priority I have, it's just as equal as that, is the, we have fifty-five hundred feet of two-inch galvanized left in town, which was installed, like, in the thirties and forties, from my research. This needs to be replaced. We got fifty-five hundred feet of it already replaced two years ago with a grant, what was it, House Bill?
House Bill one sixty-eight.
So, yeah, so we got half of it fixed already, but we still have another fifty-five hundred feet that's still sitting out there. And what happens with that is, we have major water loss, which you guys see that in reports, thirty to forty percent each month of water loss. And we're continually trying to find that water loss. So, we have sensors out, I don't know if you guys seen the little sensors. Every two weeks, we're getting the readings off those, we're going out and we're listening, we're trying to, we did find one leak over in Park Meadows, so that was already a good response from the system. But, the two-inch lines, there's no fire hydrants on them, so there's no way to actually listen. So, these devices cannot hear anything that's on the two-inch lines. So, with replacing them, hopefully, we could find and eliminate some of, possibly some leaks that's out there right now. It's not a guarantee, but you don't know until you start getting them replaced. Because the galvanize, if it's leaking and it's going down in a ditch that, it's going through gravel or something, it could be disappearing, and you don't even know where it's going. So, that's the two, the biggest things in water distribution. Electric, we have been continually working on the center circuit. That center circuit is for, it's going to accommodate spring meadows that exist right now, and the possibility of spring meadows that could come to be if it's passed. And plus, it just gives more reliability to the whole system as itself, we're adding that center circuit. We're, right now, are thirty percent done with that. But, what remains is underground construction out of our switch station. And I've got some prices back on that, and they are just astronomical. The last price I got back was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to get the pipes out of there, and it just drives me crazy, because I can do all the work myself, I just don't have the time or the manpower to get it done. So, it drives me crazy to pay somebody these astronomical numbers on something that I know I can do myself. So, we're trying to figure out ways that we can try to do this more in-house. But, with spring meadows coming in, it just eats a lot of the manpower that we have right now. The guys are over there multiple times. So, we talked about revenue streams. So, I got creative with a new revenue stream that just came to light on Monday. Spring Meadows, Fisher Homes are having a hard time getting a contractor to go in there and actually put wire in the pedestals. So, because I have them putting conduit in now. So, to create a revenue stream, we now put the wire in. So to create a revenue stream, we now put the wire in and make the connections up for them. And now we charge them a fee. So we're averaging 700 to a-
Are you charging them an astronomical fee?
Uh, well, it's seven to, 700 to a thousand dollars per house is what we're going to get. So based on the upcoming, if the upcoming houses come, I mean, that's, that's a substantial amount of revenue coming back in. At least it compensates some of the time that we're spending out there already.
Right.
On average, one home will call in, locate eight to 10 times. And that's, that's Adam or the water department does locate. So that's eight to 10 trips per every home out there. So they spend a lot of time doing locate. So it just eats up a lot of, a lot of the manpower. So the other thing with capital for electric is pole replacements. We have slowly gotten behind on that because of all the extra stuff that spring meadows has brought on to us. But we don't want to lose sight of getting the maintenance done that we was. So I have a five-year rotation on that. Every five years, poles are getting seen. 2020 was the first year, 21, yeah, 21 was the first year that we done that. So we're hoping to see those numbers from 15 to 20. We want to get down to that 5 to 10% range on our pole replacements from here on out. So it will cost less in that because we're so caught up now. We're, we're caught up so much better than what we was. So, and then metering capital, they're doing really well. We've, we've changed out, we're almost done with all the electric meters, 100% across the board. We're, all the fiber is actually in now. So we're getting all of our reads. We've purchased all the three-phase, the large demand meters. They're in process of being installed. This year, we finished up the water meters. They're 100% done, minus 23 residential meters that opted out or we couldn't get a hold of them. And then we have purchased all large meters that have already been purchased. And now hopefully by the end of 2025, we might be able to be close to having all the large water meters in. And then that will help us with catching any lost revenue through the meters because we'll have more accurate meters and literally across the board. So.
Go ahead. I, I feel pretty darn confident that, I already know the answer to this, but I just got to ask. When you're saying you think there could be some savings if we did some things ourselves, it feels like we've made good decisions over the past few years that we feel good about where we've been able to save on contractor costs by bringing people in-house. I guess what I'm assuming this means is that there's just not maybe enough confidence that either in the short or the long term that it makes sense to do that again now?
No, actually, Ben and I have been talking about this for a while. Well, that's right. And we could really use one more person. So we're still talking about it, but we have not pulled that trigger yet. But I challenged him to go get some more prices and he's coming back with higher prices or at the same prices. $185,000 to do concrete. And he's already figured out where he could rent the forms. And if he had somebody to help him, this is work that Ben and I have done in the past. Ben has done more than I have in recent, or recent, recent time. But it's literally something that him and staff would be capable of doing. But with the workload that they already have, it's difficult to do. They have done tremendous, and I'll say this with the entire team, they do tremendous work. They, they bust their butts. They do go above and beyond and try to figure out things.
Say yes.
If he had another person, yes, I think we could save money. And I also don't know how much longer we'll have a couple because, you know, there's retirement coming up, there's some other things.
Okay. I mean, I, I think you all know, and I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I feel like last time, everybody was strongly in favor of bringing people on if it's going to save us money over contracts. And we've seen a bunch of those benefits in other places where then people can work together on other projects. I assume that we're in the same place on that.
So would this be an instance of you just hiring a crew temporarily or bringing someone on permanently?
There is a person that we have talked to.
One person?
Okay. I'm talking one person.
Okay.
That would be able to help both sides, water and electric, but would be able to focus on water first.
Okay.
But to know he's able to do it and able to do-
All the other stuff too?
Yes.
It'd be a split.
Gotcha.
My vision is more of a split role where they can do both. Yeah.
And mind you, we're also running, and we have been running now for three months with a man down in electric or in streets and sewers and one down in water. And they've still been able to maintain. We're just now, Tanner's is in the drug screening process and Ben's is in another interview process.
So, you know, we talked about everyone, something about, you know, doing trimming and of course, I heard that you're talking about bringing on this, this person that could be split across the crews. I mean, I guess the question is like, how real is that? And is that a better use of our time and energy as opposed to trying to snip, snip?
It is relative where Tiffany and Michelle and I have had conversations. We'll be showing back.
Okay. And the 23, it's, it's the water, those are water meters that you, that you just have?
We, we literally got some people that we can't get to open the door, answer the door. We only know that they're moved or still actively working on. And then we have talked with Amy Blankenship about there's five that absolutely refuse to love us. So now we need to impose a fee for us to go out there and to manually work for them to be in a manual process.
I mean, if you can't be perfect and get all of them, what's, what's the acceptable number of?
None, combined, zero.
Answer that question. Okay.
It's a good answer. Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate everyone thinking about other revenue streams. And I guess I want to also understand, like, why can't we charge for the eight to 10 locates per home?
It's just a, it's a, when you own your own utility, it's a service that you have to provide.
And we can't do anything legislatively to change that?
No, it's just part of-
It's the system.
A11, it's-
Anybody that, AES and Centennial Point, they all have it.
All right.
They pay, like AES, they actually contract that job out. They pay a company to go locate their lines. So that's the difference. We, we do it, we do it in-house.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for Ben? And I will say, as we move on to Paige, you know, the agenda does have 15 minutes set aside for council questions on these capital initiatives. But we've been asking questions along the way. So I think we are doing that, that piece of the agenda already. So to close us out in style, Chief Burge.
Just for last, I do not have human waste being thrust at me at any point in this presentation. So.
Not yet.
Not yet. I mean, it happened to my lab work, but not like that. So, all right. So pretty, pretty straightforward request this year. We have narrowed our capital expenses down to what I believe are top two priorities. I think it comes as no surprise for you to hear that a police vehicle is now back up in, in the rotation for replacement. So for those of you that were around for it, you remember. For those of you that weren't, I'll give you a brief context. In 23, I believe it was, we had a delay on replacement of a vehicle. We are traditionally on a two-year cycle for replacing our vehicles. That keeps them essentially fresh. We move them into staff car positions after they're removed from service. So they're, they still get used. We get all the life out of them, but they're no longer on the streets. In 2023, that was postponed. So it was a cost-saving measure that was postponed in 23 that has had a tremendous domino effect. So I just want to highlight, which is not something in my memo, but I do speak to the fact that we've had, the delayed, the delayed replacement has caused some additional maintenance costs. And by additional maintenance costs, I mean the third of, of cost to replacing vehicles. So we have currently in our fleet, four vehicles, two of which are hybrids, which is the, the plan moving forward, hybrid or electric. The two that are, are hybrid are going to be our newest vehicle, the truck, and our 2021 vehicle, which I think is a great example to highlight how much we have spent in the last three, so it would be three, three years going into 26 for the delayed vehicle. So 110, which is our hybrid vehicle, since purchase, we spent about $2,500 on maintenance, routine maintenance, oil changes, what have you. Hybrid vehicles, we, we did our research and it's proven to be true, but require far less maintenance, routine maintenance. 111, which is our second oldest vehicle, is a 2019, we spent about 5,700. And that's a gasoline vehicle. So not terrible, but that one's not technically slated for replacement until the old cycle would have been 27. And then 112, which is the vehicle that should have been replaced in the rotation this year, technically, if we're, if we're being technical. We've spent just over $20,000 in vehicle maintenance because that vehicle should have been taken out of the rotation two years ago.
In the past year?
In the past two, since we've had it, since we've had it, so 2017. But the other two vehicles are two years older, two years older, or two years younger, rather, and we've spent a third of that. So just by delaying taking it out of rotation for two years, we've spent a third of, of what it would have cost to get a new one. So, so I can't stress enough how important it is that we get back into our rotation. If I'm being completely realistic, we should have put in for two vehicles this year to get us back on track. I understand that that's not feasible, that's not feasible at this, at this time. So if we're doing that, then you will see me come back to council next year for that second replacement. So it would be two back-to-back years. What I can say is obviously the success from the 2021 purchase, the hybrid, the cost savings we've had both in gasoline and in maintenance have proven beneficial. So not only are we going to focus on a hybrid, but we are actually looking at and moving forward with, I hope, an all-electric for this 2026. So council will see some, tons of additional information come to you guys about that, assuming that it gets concluded in the budget. Oakwood is the agency we've been speaking to, have been very kind. They've even offered to bring it out and let, let council take a look at it, see it, the whole nine yards. And they gave us a pretty accurate quote as far as beginning to end, acquisition of the vehicle, outfitting of the vehicle, including electric stations for about $80,000.
So to, I'm, I'm, to touch on what you were just saying, Brian, so 20,000 over how, how many years?
It's a 2017. So we're looking at eight years.
Okay, so 20,000 over eight years. Okay. Versus, versus, I'm sorry, versus, what was the, what were the other numbers?
So the, the next highest cost I have is a $5,700 cost for maintenance. That's a 2019. So that's a six-year. Yeah. So there's a reason we have a two-year rotation. It's because that's typically what we've seen based on data, that they start to get serious unexpected maintenance costs that occur with the vehicles. So taking them out of rotation prevents that, obviously.
What's the make and model of that vehicle?
The 2019 or the one that has the $20,000?
The 17.
That's a Ford Explorer.
That's the one, is it wrapped or no?
Yeah, they're, well, they're all technically wrapped. But yeah, they're all wrapped.
It's not fancily wrapped, is it?
No.
Okay. You know what I'm talking about, with the squares and like the, the graphics?
Yeah.
Okay.
Paige, have you looked at financing vehicles? There's, that's a trend.
It's funny.
That Beaver Creek Township was doing.
So we, I, I did put an inquiry in with a company that, you had a networking connection, I'm sorry. But it's Enterprise. And we're actually currently sitting down with them, having conversations about what the cost benefit analysis would look like to move to that structure. So it would be essentially leasing vehicles and then rotating them out based on their recommendations for, hey, the vehicle's getting two, three years old, we recommend replacing it and this is how much it would cost versus you can buy it outright and it would cost you this much. So we've had two conversations with them. We actually have an in-person meeting where they've put together a formal presentation that'll show hard costs. Next week?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Good. So do they also, I think Enterprise sounds familiar. I believe that they will buy cars that you can, they'll look at, if they have other clients in Green County, they'll try to time it so that the purchases are around, you know, at the same time or around the same time to help save money. So that's just another consideration. But that's, I know that's a growing trend to try to, you know, spread out the cost over time rather than being hit all at once.
And they touched on that a little bit. I think we'll get a lot more information tomorrow out of our meeting. But, you know, they're, what they would like to see is us as an entire village move to that structure, not just the police department because we're such a small agency. But you have to have a minimum of 20 vehicles. But we'll get all that information out to you guys, assuming it was a viable option. Any other questions on the car? And I'll move into the second one.
Wait for the second one.
All right. So second priority, which, I believe I narrowed all this down from about 12 things in my capital budget. So second priority is an expansion into our existing TASER inventory. So in 23, we also purchased, we are on a five-year contract, we purchased TASERS. In 23, those TASERS were significantly outdated, out of warranty. There was three newer models. So when, we didn't even go with the newest, newest model when we upgraded in 23. Due to staffing issues as well as cost saving, I, I decided to move forward with only the purchase of enough TASERS for the staffing that we had at that time, which was seven. At full staff, we have 11 people, which we are now moving it back into that territory again, knock on wood. So we'd like to get those additional TASERS into the, into the inventory so that we have the proper tools for every officer, not just the seven that currently have those tools. So outdated in 23, when we replaced them, significantly more outdated now. So, and we're also getting to the point where we're no longer going to be able to buy batteries, resupply them, those types of things. And that is an already contracted item. So we, we have a five-year contract that started in 23. So that'll continue into, do my math, 27, 28, 28. So the addition of the, the expansion to the inventory would add an additional $4,500 annually.
Okay. All right.
Paige, am I understanding your, what you said in your memo, are you, you're saying you think these other things that are in the 26 category, other than those two, you're saying, I think I can push those further on? Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm saying I am pushing. Do I, do I think it's wise? Of course not. But, you know, considering I had to pick two priorities, I chose the two that I did for a reason. The additional items, so we'll, we'll talk about bodyborne cameras briefly because you guys will see some additional information coming out about that. So that's another five-year contractually obligated service that we have entered that in 23 as well with the help of some grants. We've had nothing but issues with the current vendor as well as some of our partner agencies who have the same vendor. So we've all been in communication about what's another better vendor. So we've found another better vendor at a cheaper cost with a better product. So for example, that's something that, that I'm delaying because I think we're going to end up essentially finding a way out of that contract with no penalties or fees because of the issues we've experienced and then saving costs there. So we would push that. AED models being pushed. Now, those are, those are what officers carry in the cars. Fortunately, we have a very active and responsive fire department that's very close by. So typically when we get on scene where an AED might need to be used, the fire department's going to get there before we even get it out anyway. So able to delay that further. Radio upgrades, computers, those kinds of things, while I suggest and recommend we replace them because if they do fail and we did not budget for them, they will have to be replaced. It's a non-negotiable. It'll come to you in the form of a supplemental. But since they have not failed, we do our regular maintenance on the items. A delay would not be catastrophic at this time.
So you said something about the body worn. So contractually and financially committed, that means obligated through 2027.
Right.
So, you know, if, you know, you said you're confident that, you know, you can, you can probably get out of that contract, that's great. But that, but if you can't, we're still in it until, for two more years?
Unfortunately.
Okay.
Even if you get out of this one, you're still going into another one. So that has to stay.
Well, yeah, no, yeah, I got that part. Yeah.
The orange stays.
Yep. Does that make sense? I hope I answered your question.
And just so you, Paige's prime example for computer failure is she was around the computer for about four days because it was not able to be fixed. So it was, needed to be replaced and we waited as long as possible and it made the choice of which day it was going to be.
R.I.P. computer.
And just to clarify, all of the items listed for 2026, we currently have those budgeted. So we can, we will adjust them as to what.
Sure.
But as of right now, for a whole list.
Thank you for that. Anything else for Chief Burge?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all for all of that.
I got two more. Mine's really fast. Stormwater, we allocated $86,075, or $84,075 for the OPWC grant. It is in the capital funds. So that is not a big deal. I just wanted to cover that one as. funds, so that is not a big deal, I just wanted to cover that one as, the other is, is the Bryant Center, the finishing up of the cameras for the downstairs that are failing, and to upgrade the ones where you can actually see something, except for the parking lot, that is on the capital list for the Bryant Center. And then we have about 10 more windows that are actively leaking into the building that need to be replaced, we pushed them off this year because of the boiler, and so I'd like to put them back in the budget because they do need to be done. We actually have, we was going to do PD area, but then we have made it to where they're not going to get done, because we can't afford those right now, because they are special glass to where you cannot project the house through. So Tanner has made repairs on those, so we now need to shift them to the other ones that are actively leaking when it rains or weather. So those are my two for those. And then the other category, they're very minute, the only thing that's big on the other list is Lawson Place, $15,000, just in case we have a tenant move out and we have to do that year ago, we have to make sure. That's mine.
Any questions for Johnny on his updates? All right. Thank you again, all of you for that. Now we're into the council-specific budget, and it looks like, Michelle, you're up first?
Yes, so we have the special events slide up, we sent out the forms for our normal special events to submit, you can see listed there, there's been funds requested, and then there's been income requested. That's straightforward. Judy, do you have anything to add for special events?
Nope, you've got everything.
And then I'm going to go to the council commissions, I haven't worked it out, we have environmental commission, totally $4,500, and then we also have PAC, which is $4,500. And that's been requested, Carmen was a PAC. And actually, those are reduced from last year, the PAC from last year.
Yeah, those are about half of what the... And then, do we have the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, I'll admit, I'm an old guy, the events, do we have that, like, in print somewhere, or?
Yeah, it's in the request packet.
Okay.
Should be towards the back.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't look through it, I don't see it in here. It's the last page, Brian.
I don't know if we have all the events in the packet.
Not Earth Day, I mean, Earth Day wasn't requested, others were, street fair is not...
All you have up there are in the packet that we have. It was like the first email we got.
All right. Well, actually, how about you just read them off to me?
Do you, can you see my screen?
All right, okay.
I can make it bigger. Oops. And there's another page.
This is not the one.
That's not the one either. Okay, all right, here I see. Okay.
Anything jumping out to you, Brian?
Nope. All right, yeah, sorry I missed that, yeah, okay.
All right, so I'm going to let Tiffany take over on the next page.
So one of the things we worked through, and I, I hope I'm not overstepping what we discussed as finance committee, but we were hoping that each council member who's bringing a council-sponsored project could spend a little bit of time speaking on that topic, you could talk through it with council, and then only those that received seconds, essentially, you go from a theory of motions to seconds, and only those that receive seconds will advance to next council meeting, and then we'll have an opportunity for conversation about each of the sponsored projects that are listed, you should have those in the packet, as you should have the written form, just as a note, it was really helpful to have those, I hope it was not a problem to have you fill those out, I think, to have it in a packet, and to have a process this year for those, really helped from a finance perspective. What we will then do, once we know what the projects, the council-sponsored projects are, and maybe perhaps a refined budget, I know some of you have talked about refining those budgets and those asks, we will start to put numbers to those in the plan, and so you can see the implication that those would have on the finances. So if we could just start maybe at the top, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And Carmen, I believe yours are the first ones in the packet.
Yeah, so, so the funding request for environmental commission was reduced pretty significantly, because I want for the commission to focus on not so much, and I won't call them pet projects, because people are passionate about the things that they do, and I don't mean anything by that, but I really want to focus on education around sustainable, sustainable building practices, local food systems, education, and, and creating a directory, so that people can start to have a relationship with people that are doing cottage products, and primarily protein producers in the area, we got some farmers that have lots of good meat, and then also make, have a networking directory, so I want to focus on that. And then the waterhead, watershed health education, and is also really important, this is the Little Miami Valley, Little Miami watershed is one of the most important watersheds that goes into the Ohio River, and we, because of where we are, and how, how many farms we have, and their traditional farming, have, have quite an impact on the health of the Ohio River, and then consequently on the Mississippi, and then consequently on this dead zone that's in the Gulf of, the Gulf of, the Gulf of Mexico. Look, you don't know much then.
I hope you didn't almost do that.
The Gulf, the Gulf, the Gulf. So, so I want, I really want to start educating around that, and move, yes, we need to recycle, you know, we need to, we need to, you know, we need to compost, but there are some, you know, higher, higher priorities that, that consumers, that consumers should have, that capitalism doesn't want us to think about, and I want to, I want to start to have these conversations, especially around sustainable building practices. So that's that one.
So, Carmen, my understanding, those, those are already funded, the events are already, or the commissions are already funded? So we're only talking about the council-sponsored initiatives at this point?
Okay, cool. Oh, so that would be?
It's the larger projects.
Oh.
Your capital?
America 250?
250.
Okay.
And, yeah, and...
So are you funding, you mean, these are baked into the budget we have now?
Yeah, the council commissions are, yes.
Oh, okay.
Which is the big number?
That's okay, no, it's all right. It was super compelling, I'm being honest, I'm real excited for this right now. If I'm being honest, I'm at like 60.
Looking pretty good, so you're good.
Yeah, so, let's see, there is a nationwide project to celebrate the semi, what is it, the semi, I had it, semi...
Sesquicentennial?
Semi.
Sesquicentennial, there you go.
Yeah, there you go, I knew, I tried to memorize it, yeah.
And I had, it was good, but we passed a resolution 2024-29, declaring support for the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi, Semi-Quincentennial, that's what it is.
Good on you.
And it's a, it's a nationwide initiative, and a statewide initiative to get all 88 counties involved with celebrating arts, culture, and history of the country for 250 years. So there are some things lined up, from April until October, there is a, you know, films that have to do with Ohio in all the counties, so some will sponsor that. There is a, another kind of statewide initiative for all the 88 counties to participate in like a community barbecue, or community picnic, which I've already signed us up for. Some of these programs and some of the projects are funded at the state level, the majority of the specialty product, projects, or the projects that make Yellow Springs unique, wouldn't be funded. And that's why I put in for $20,000 to help with, I need to get my packet, to help with supporting more local initiatives. The plan is to have a speaker a month to talk about, we want to have someone talk about the Underground Railroad, we want to talk, we want to have someone talk about the Great Migration, we want to have someone talk about the folks in Virginia and Kentucky who brought us Labor Day, and now we get to celebrate, and talk about the, the real history of why we have these celebrations that we have, to really think about, and get, get, really think about why we celebrate the holidays that we celebrate. So it's always better on paper for me, I'm going to say potato to Elise, it's like, but it's in the packet, and my intention, I could have just read what I wrote in the packet, but I don't ever do that. I just basically want to have a party for like a whole year.
Well, and you want to also, like, educate about...
Right, because there's just too much that we do not know about one another, and I think, not I think, I know, that that is directly contributing to this political climate, period, we do not know enough about one another.
So I think our seconds mean that we'll talk about these more at the next budget meeting, and so I will second that request.
Thanks for taking me out of my misery.
Yes.
So that's for the 51?
She went to the second one, not the first one.
Total, or, or, we talk on one?
That's just for the 20.
Okay, just one, okay.
Yes.
All right, and then the other one was, it was a capital, I can't, 12,000, and that was for Ellis, and then there was the Community Gardens on Corey Street. Now, I don't feel like, I mean, it's a capital fund request, because I don't feel like that should be the responsibility of, of boards and commissions, at all, because the people that are in front of me, and the man that's up here, knows about, know, you know, knows more about, about the things that we want to do that way, and it's village property, and quite honestly, when it comes to big, bigger projects like this, the, the, the less amount of cooks in the kitchen, the better. So I'm making those requests for Ellis Pond Cleaning, it's a, it's in, it's in the packet, and then also the Community Gardens on, on Corey Street, which I see that a lot of work, I went by there, and I hadn't gone by there, and so a lot of work has been done, it looks, I mean, it looks great, it's great already, and we got the, the little juvenile shed, the little, the little secret shed gone, much of the, much to the dismay of several 14-year-olds, I'm sorry, babies, I didn't mean to take away your, take away your little spot, but, and then the concrete pad needs to go, so, I mean, do I, I, I guess I'm requesting a second for that, too, it has to be done, is that how that works?
I think what you're asking is for a second to be, that to be added to the parks budget, to be able to have extra money to spend.
How about, thank you, Johnny, yeah. So 15 to the parks budget, and then also, and then the 12 also?
And let me, let me just throw this in, something I meant to say in introducing this section, just like we have been talking about all along, cutting or trimming our requests, we should feel free to consider changing some numbers now, and if something does get a second to go on to the next meeting, it's, I would like to submit that it's still eligible for trimming, as, as needed. So it's really just, do we keep talking about it, not money's done and appropriated?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So can we take, so for instance, Community Gardens, it sounds like some things have happened, so is it possible that that number would go down?
It probably, absolutely, probably by a couple grand, I guess, at this point, with the, well, did you guys contract, did you contract the tree, the tree work, is the tree work contracted?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, cool, all right, I know, I know that guy, all right.
We're doing a lot of it to cut, cut the pricing, but there's a certain amount that you just need to first.
And like, that's what I said, like, that's why I said a couple grand. I think 15 is a fair enough number, and I, and it might even be on the low side, considering what needs to be done, it might even be on the low side, so I, I don't know, I, I think that we should, but I'd like, like, like Kevin said, this is not a done deal, but I was pretty, in the packet, I laid out why, and researched the numbers, and you have basically a line by line of what amount per thing, and I think I was pretty conservative.
So I think for Corey Street, Community Gardens, I'd give a second to having Johnny work with Tanner to see what that looks like in that budget item, so, so I'd like that to move forward, and, and I was happy I was on my bike to see the work happening today, yes, I was, yeah, this afternoon. So anyway, so I, I think that's what I'm kind of hearing, gentlemen.
Ellis Pond Cleaning is this mechanical weedo boat that can operate within like two feet of water, up to how many ever feet of water, and it requires two passes, two to three passes on a pond as big as Ellis is, or that's the size of Ellis, and that was the rough number on how much those two to three passes would be with that particular machine, that is pretty awesome.
Is this a service?
It's a service, okay.
We talked about this very briefly, finance, but just to put together, I think what, make sure I understand, put together what you said about the, like, capital things as it pertains to staff, so I, I hope I get this right, the Ellis Pond stuff is, it's kind of had this dynamic where there was, there was council members involved, and commissions involved, and so if I understand correctly, the dynamic is that right now, staff is basically has not put anything, like, isn't putting anything, figuring out into saying what to do about the pond, the maintenance around the pond, still happening, we're talking about fountains, et cetera, but the pond itself, you're saying, hey, we should put this back in the purview of staff, and that it's going to need some investment if we're going to make it more usable?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood, I would second that.
Thanks, Gavin.
Yeah. And sort of second the idea that in the future, it's not the council saying, here's how much you...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, exactly, I'm not interested in having it being boards and commission responsibility anymore, because it's, it, we don't.
And then Carmen, you got Will and Gao?
So that, I, I want to remove, because that, that's a private company, and I didn't realize that it was a company and not, you know, I mean, I, I do now, and I did when I got the request, but I had a, I had an inquiry via phone call about the request, and that's, it's, I don't know how we would move forward with that, it's a, it's a business.
Okay, good enough, thank you, so those, out of your four, three are moving forward?
Right.
And this is your... All right.
Yep, I think, Kevin, we are now on to, let's start with the Yellow Springs High School over-the-street commemorative banner.
Yeah, can I get a second on that? I mean, it's a thousand dollars. So if you, if you paid attention to the Juneteenth banners, banner, that we've been using each year, you put it up there, and then it says a certain date, certain time... using each year, you put it up there, and then it says a certain date, certain time, certain location. Well, next year you use the same banner, but we have patches that you pull off and replace, and then, okay, different location, different date, different time. So same thing I'm proposing, I was at the, I did not graduate from Yellow Springs High School, but I, my children, my stepchildren did, so I was there at the all-school reunion, and it was the 50th reunion of the class of 1975, I think I did the math right, so next year will be the 50th reunion of 1976, and so what I'm proposing is a banner, high quality, you know, with the patches, I mean, it's always, and I worked with the folks at the school to do this, it's always, whenever it is, Fourth of July weekend or whatever, something generic like that, or typical, and each year, next year, it'll be the 50th for the class of '76. So, you know, we're all old enough now that we're, every year, we're, we know somebody has a 50-year high school reunion. So from talking to some of the folks there from '76, they thought it would be nice to have something like that, and I thought we, we could do that. That, that number is high, I, I think it's, I just compared the cost with the Juneteenth banner and just sort of fudged some extra money, if you would, for doing the patches going forward, just having the money set aside. So again, it's, it's almost low-hanging fruit, it's a good thing for the community, I mean, folks show up, they, they spend money, they do what they do in town, it's a great time for everybody involved, I think everybody's just lighter on their feet during those high school reunions. I will keep talking, I'm less than until someone's second.
So the idea is to have the banner, and then who, okay, so design, produce, and install?
Yeah, it's the same folks, help me with the company, Johnny?
Digital friends.
Digital friends, yeah.
So digital friends, so they're going to be designing, or we're going to pick someone else to design?
To be determined, I mean, I, in the past, I've given them, a design's been done, we gave them design, and then somebody here on staff did some.
Cameron.
Cameron, some banner or something that was done recently, so haven't talked to Cameron about that, but, you know, I.
And then the idea is just to have a patch, so it says, it says 50th period, and then there's a patch every year?
Yeah, 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 we'll figure that out, but yeah, it's, it's, we'll spend the big money one time and use that over and over again.
Or it seems like it could just say, Yellow Springs High School reunion without a patch, but anyway.
Well, but it's the 50th reunion for a particular class.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so the whole idea was, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, it's a whole class reunion or all-class reunion, everybody's having a good time, but there's really a big focus on the group who's 50th, it is.
Some of them are like, you know, there's something we still have, we have some alum that are like 70th, and that's crazy.
Yeah. So we'll, you know, in the design process, we'll talk about how much, how crazy we want to get with it. So, can I get a second, please? I move this, this thousand, small, $1,000 request, move forward.
I'm going to second because I think that it's cool, and also, I don't know, I feel like maybe it should be like an.
I move it into the signature event zone, so that's why, like, I think your second is legitimate, so.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Yes, yeah, not that you needed me to, but yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's what I'm leaning towards.
Okay, great, well, thank y'all for that, and in interest, I'm trying to go fast, fiber to the home, so was it this year we had $50,000? Years are, you know, yeah.
And not just set aside, but we spent.
Yeah, it was money well spent, it was, it was necessary. So on the premise, on the premise that us getting to municipal broadband is going to be a multi-year project, you know, the money is, the request is to set aside funds so we can keep the ball moving, so we can expand our current network, Johnny's more on, on top of things in terms of, you know, what we're doing or talking to with, with Ultra Fiber, you know, but I think the idea is, instead of spending a bunch of money over a short period of time, I think it's making small investments, not submitting the 100,000 is small, but compared to the 350, nearly 400,000, we've already spent on it, I, I think we want to, and, and I won't be on council in the future, but I hope that we can consider this a multi-year, you know, expansion project, where we put some money in each year so we can get a little closer to Nirvana each year. I don't know if we're going to go late, I'm willing to, I don't want to hold anybody up, that, this is one of the issues where I, I, I can certainly, I'm not wedded to the 100,000, but anything that council will be willing to do to continue to keep the ball going, I would really hope that we, we could, we could consider that. And just to reiterate, if I get a second, you're not seconding the 100,000, you're hopefully seconding the, the thought of let's keep this thing going, and when we did 50 this year, it was money well spent, you know, if we end up, if this particular item ends at 50, I'll be okay, but again, I would like, and I'm not looking for a formal commitment, but I'd like for the, the, the energy to be maintained, to keep this thing going.
So has anything changed, like where we left off when we did goals, it seemed like the dynamic was that we didn't have a pro forma that showed that the project worked over time, we didn't have all the questions answered, we tried multiple times to get clarity on how to make the project sustainable. I, I think I, I think there's a lot of people like me who like the idea of municipal broadband theoretically, but practically, we just never saw that it was possible, and so I'm just trying to understand, like, I think when we, yeah, I'm just, has anything changed, or is the idea that this is sort of a, well, we hope to get there someday, so let's put something in in hopes that we expand it little by little, but there's not sort of a grand plan, it would just be expand a little bit when we can, and then hope to figure out the maintenance little by little?
Yes, to the second half and, and all of that, and Johnny, like I said, I know, I know you, I think there was going to be a conversation with SpringsNet or East Thor, and you've been in conversation with the Ultra Fiber folks, so, I mean, does this make sense?
Ultra Fiber is coming 2026 to Yellow Springs, they're in the process of inventory in the polls now. Where I, if we was going to connect the homes that we've already passed, I could see maybe some of it, but man, I'm seeing us cut other things that we need right now, and this is something that another company's coming in to do on their own dime, that Green County put $10 million into, so I'm saying, this is maybe something, maybe in a couple years, because we can't, Brian, we can't even sell it, I did get the answer, we don't own the backbone, so I think we need to use what we've got and we're maintaining because we're building a little bit, because every time there's a problem, we have to send somebody out, and luckily, we have a local person that owns a hardware store that is still doing it, and, but he also has invoices, and if we have a tree fall down, we still have fiber that we got to put back up. So this is not one that I, I think we should jump on and give a second to, it's only up to you guys.
Okay.
I do need money to maintain it.
And I think we've given it like a good conversation, is there a second?
Well, but Johnny, you said we do need money to maintain it, so where's that coming from?
Right now, we're collecting fees, and that is what we're using to maintain it, and I cannot tell you where that's at, I don't know if one of the ladies can pull me up. I can't, we'll, we'll have that at the next meeting, of what we have in the funds right now, but we also probably got equipment that's getting ready to be outdated as Paige and the staff indicated, because I know that some of the equipment that was installed three years ago is probably outdated now, and as soon as it starts failing, we don't have backup equipment.
You feel like the fees that you're getting can cover all that?
I honestly can't answer that because I can't tell you what's in the funds, so I will have that answered.
So can we move some amount forward, and we talk about it more later, maybe we get these questions answered?
Is this for operating or for expansion? That's the, that's the question.
Operating.
So I can jump in and answer a couple of the questions real quick, currently, the fund is sitting at around $30,000, we expect about $95,000, we have a $95,000 budget this year, for that, $49,000 of that, it, well, there was a piece of it that was for some of the stuff that the council had approved last year, and, and we are halfway through that budget this year. Annually speaking, year over year, we're looking at about $45,000 in and out of that to do the broadband initiatives.
Net profit?
So right now, we have it built out, not with profit, because we would put the money back into it, but it's sitting with about a 20, $28 to $30,000 cash budget, with money in any netting, so.
And if we have one tree fall?
What's, what's, what's one tree worth?
Can't tell you that. I'll get, I'll get that for you next time.
All right, next time, so we need to move it forward, so we can talk about it next time.
I didn't say that.
That's what I heard. All right, can I get a second for 50?
Well, hold on, question though, I mean, the village, the village has to maintain what's currently here, is not then a council initiative?
Right.
So the question is, is council wanting to add money outside of the village operating and maintaining what we have to, is that, is that what I'm understanding you're asking of council?
Well, can I go backwards? I, I would like to see just the operating be left completely out of it, and if we need the money, then we can do a supplemental and come back and explain to council why we need the money.
That's what I'm saying, this is the village's utility, basically.
And we have in our village goal, like, one of the goals for the year was to basically figure this out and wrap it up, right? I mean, yeah.
I just heard that Ultra Fiber's coming when, '26?
And we also heard that we don't own the backbone, so, I mean, yeah, so we've got some big things to figure out that I don't think are about this budget session, so, I mean, we've never had that meeting, like, you know.
So, so, so can we, I'm willing to step back, I do want, I do wish that the project could continue to grow and expand, and I do think we need to have the, the meeting so we can get all these questions answered, because it was my understanding that the $10 million that Green County is offering to Ultra Fiber is to serve underserved communities, and we are not that.
It is, but they're still coming here and upcoming.
Okay. Is there any interest in moving aside before?
I want to move the meeting forward to figure out the status of our, so I support that.
All right, I'm good with, with that, I will step back from this issue, I heard supplemental hanging over our head, so if a supplemental needs to happen, so be it. The other two homing things, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll drop those, I'll cut those in half right now, if I can get a second. I feel like I'm an auctioneer, but I just can't talk this thing.
You do sound that way.
When you said move the meeting forward, I thought you meant us.
Yeah, I mean.
I have the same kind, oh, go ahead, Brian.
Well, I just, I don't want us to forget that, because it's not listed here, I thought we were going to add it, is that there's also 80,000.
Well, we redid it.
It's in this sheet here.
Oh, it's on that sheet?
It's phase two, so it is not that much, Brian, well, it's not that much, it is $45,655.
So in addition to the request in your packet of 108 to 13, there's an additional request for waived tap fees of 45,655, which puts that request at over $150,000.
And so the tap fees aren't like some theoretical cost, it's like, that's just what it costs, we just pass on what it costs, not like a fee that's like.
We pay for the equipment.
But the equipment costs, I'm just making sure everybody's clear, that that's not like a.
A tap fee waiver means the general fund has to pay for the tap fees to the utility enterprises, so this would come out of the general fund, $45,655 would come from the general fund and be split up amongst all three enterprises to pay for the tap fees.
Yeah, so I just want everybody's clear.
I will second talking about these at the next meeting.
The whole number or the tap fees?
I mean, all, the whole.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, because I think, I think this deserves a little bit more discussion.
Yeah, and my, my big question is just, I'll look forward to more conversation, I'd love to have sort of an update, like, this is another one of that we talked about a while ago, we stopped the conversation, it's really interesting that you brought it up, and so I want to know what happened. So do you not have to talk about that now? Let's talk about it next time, yeah.
All right, good, so it's moving forward, we'll talk about it next time, the repair funds, so these are like 5% of what they anticipate.
No, I seconded the whole thing, so let's just move it to the next meeting.
All right, I'm done, great.
Okay.
Brian, you're on.
So then it's me.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you. So I think Carolyn and the senior center made a great case for why it makes sense to support our senior center, I think keep in mind that over 50% of our constituents are part of that group, they offer amazing services, one of the things I want to emphasize out of the gates is that we discussed that we will lower this ask to 32,000, the current thing you have in front of you is 60,000. Right now, the main struggle that the senior center has is that they are deficit spending at 40,000 a year and trying to stop that gap, this is not about funding for the new senior center, this is totally operations, and I think we all see that the senior center does an amazing job of budgeting carefully and spending their dollars well.
Brian, feel free to continue talking, but I will second.
Okay, then there you go, we move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, this was, you might recall, earlier in the year, when Philip came from the chamber and talked about the fireworks cost, so this is the fireworks cost for the Fourth of July fireworks, that's.
How hard is this number, or how solid is this number?
That's just what it costs to do the fireworks, I'm sure that, you know, you can see in their, their numbers, if anything that we would do would help, I think they're, just like all of us, they're trying to figure out all their different projects and where they put their time and resources, and this is, it's just, it's a big chunk.
It's a chamber thing now and not Oddfellows.
Exactly, so the Oddfellows had it, now it's the chamber, it's a, you know, they fundraised for it, they get, you know, they pass the hat at the actual event, they have sponsorships, and it's just, I, my main thing is that when we hear requests, I'm really hoping they all come here, and so they had brought it up earlier, so I said, hey, bring it up here, let's talk about it, I know they would be happy with anything.
We can, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, we can talk more next time, great, thanks Carmen. All righty.
Can I jump in here and couch this next 10 minutes?
Yes.
A little bit, all right, so one of the things the finance committee and, and we were hoping for are two minutes, I mean, really, I, I don't want to be crass and set a timer, but some, two minutes, when we look at October 15th, I'm trying to frame the, the context, conversation about the budget for that meeting, notwithstanding these items, okay, are there things that you feel like you, you want us to explore, look at, bring back, present to you for the October 15th budget session? We will, of course, bring with us, you know, these items that we just talked through further for that meeting, but we're trying to look, we're opening the floor to say, what else? We didn't do line item budgets, you have those in your packet, we went through that with the finance committee, but we didn't know what there may be that you all want to have in front of you at the next meeting to talk budgets. So if you could just roll down quickly, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, well, municipal broadband, do you think, Johnny, you would have time to, whatever it takes, have a meeting, do some numbers, be able to come back with some questions answered in two weeks? some questions answered in two weeks?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
For your rest.
Okay, so good. That's one thing. Um, regenerating, not a real good word, of, of the capital requests as presented to us. So I understand maybe they hadn't gone through that, through that last cycle of refinement.
Yep.
So would, would, would want to see that.
Okay.
Um, that's all I can think of. Uh, but, you know, we'll, all the things we said we would talk about more, they're, they're by default on the agenda already. So.
Right. Gavin?
Yeah. Um, I think I'm, I've mostly covered the items. The one thing, I guess, that's sort of like a big picture thing that, um, when I was doing the, like, um, the finance committee report out, that was, I think, representative of what the group was saying. So this is not that. This is just me personally. We don't have any money in the budget for, um, pre-development costs or any kind of investment in, um, uh, you know, thinking about, for instance, affordable housing projects that are beyond, I understand that there's the lost and placed dollars in, but, you know, we talked about glass farm. We've talked about, um, you know, the other parcels that we have. So I'm just sort of making a note that what I, the thing that I get nervous about with status quo budgets is that we're, I, I still want to see us try to figure out how do we make headway on a community that's more affordable, that has a lower median age and has increased racial diversity. And so I just, I don't see how we're going to make headway on those things notably without investing some money at some point. Um, and so I'm just naming that, that's, I'm not, this isn't like a thing where you need to make a change. I'm just sort of saying to the community, saying to my colleagues that the budget right now doesn't have those dollars. And so we shouldn't expect to see any notable movement on a, you know, glass farm project, for example, without any dollars in the budget.
Yeah, I, um, so the pre-development piece, yes. And also is that something that, I mean, I know it's not a lot of money, but that's something that could come out of the Affordable Housing Fund, like the, the, some of the legal fees came out of the Affordable Housing Fund. So if somebody were to magically pop in tomorrow and say, hey, this is what I got, it's a really great idea, that could come, that could come out of the Affordable Housing Fund, right? Does that make sense?
Well, do we still have, are there?
There's a little bit of money in there.
60 some odd?
I'll just do that.
Give me a second. I can.
Question.
And, and you mentioned lost and place. That's separate or is that from the?
It's in the same category, but it's got its own number. There's like 60,000 left in the.
So I guess if I, sorry, if I may, maybe it would be good to just, if there are any other things like that where there's money left in a fund that's, that would then theoretically be available. Cause if I would have known that, then I would augment what I just said. So that would be helpful if there are funds that have other dollars, if we could get a list of that. Is that, okay?
I have this. No, that's it. That's, that's all I got.
So, I mean, I think, so I will, first of all, like, uh, I guess extend on affordable housing. So, I mean, I guess we talk about 60,000, but how much is that, of that is earmarked for lost and place, you know? And I think we should have some clarity on that. But I would agree, that's a huge gap and that is supposed to be our number one goal is council. So, um, so I think we do need to talk about that. And if it's no longer a goal, um, well, so otherwise, um, I would like some kind of clarity on, um, in kind from the village for council requests, specifically what we do for Fourth of July. Um, and that's going to help me decide whether we should also contribute another 11,000 bucks on top of everything else that we do. Um, and I think there are other sources of revenue for that. Um, I, you know, at the beginning, mentioned legal and that it looks really good to me. Like I, I was really concerned that that was like, gonna blow out when we change that relationship, but, um, it hasn't. So I think that would be good for us to see. Um, and then some kind of capital comparison. So, um, I appreciate everybody being on the firing line. I actually wanted to be down there with you guys. Like, I don't really like this setup myself. Um, but I was told that that couldn't happen. But, um, I heard some things like Paige, you, like, sort of saying, like, some things are potentially going to be moved forward. So I'd like to see some kind of capital comparison, you know, in terms of what it looks like to punt some of these, uh, projects because I'm not sure I'm ready to cut them. I appreciate everyone shaving and appreciate us shaving. Um, but, uh, but anyway, I, I want to have clarity on that. So. Oh, I didn't realize I was being timed, but anyway, I'm done.
Tiffany said two minutes.
Thank you.
So if all of the council requests are passed, that brings us to a deficit of about 1.2 million dollars. And I would tell you, I come from a different perspective on this because I worked for a community where we lost a levy. It was a community that that had never happened before. And I had to lay off 45 people, me personally and another deputy chief. And that was the worst experience of my life. And from what I'm hearing in the community, this levy's at risk. There are people that, I mean, there are so many unknowns. You guys know groceries are expensive. Everything's going through the roof. And I don't think that we're preparing enough for that possibility. I would hate to see people have to be laid off. Um, so I just would request that you take a look at your budgets again. Do we need all the, the water, uh, features? Can we cut a couple of those? It's, this is the time to really take a hard look and it's not easy to do. We were forced to do it. Um, and then we had to make cuts. We had freezes. People don't get raises for a long time. Years later, we had the same thing where we were, um, going to be in a deficit and we were asked to cut. I personally took a pay cut so that staff didn't have to do it. Um, and then, uh, you know, we ended up working towards just having department heads frozen. But that's, that's what we're looking at. That's what we're potentially facing. And I think that in, instead of continuing to spend and spend, and I don't think it's just in capital. I think it's on both sides. I think that, um, the budget as a whole needs to be looked at. Do we really need to spend $25,000 in travel next year to ensure that people have jobs? You know, get through the levy. Okay. Get the levy passed and then you can look at things in 2027. But my fear, again, this is just from what I'm hearing, that, that we're not going to have a good outcome and we're going to be facing serious, serious decisions here.
I have some clarification on what you mean by water features. Are you talking about?
Oh, I meant the water fountains. Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I was pointing. Anyway, so, okay, you can wait three seconds.
Sorry.
All righty. Tiffany, it's to your item.
Well, that helps us. So I heard you. I've got it all written down and we'll do our best to have in two weeks' time, uh, some of the information that you all requested.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Anything else for the good of the order?
No.
Yeah, just, I want to say thanks to Tiffany and Michelle.
Yep.
And Gavin.
And everybody.
For doing a ton of work. Yeah. And, yeah.
And all the department heads, everybody.
Very, very cool.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming in.
I like y'all being out there. I like the really good.
It's fun.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
She'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.